The Muscatine City Council will come to order. We'll begin this evening with a roll call. Greg?
Councilmember Fred.
Present.
Phillips?
Present.
Bynum?
Present.
Jahadi?
Natfig?
Present.
Fitzgerald?
Raywalk?
Present.
Five present, two absent.
Very good, Greg. Thank you. We begin this evening with item number two, which is review of the solid waste pilot program. Laura?
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and Council, for allowing time tonight for us to give you an update on where we are with the refuse collection program, which we're moving to automated collection, one step at a time. We're phasing it in. And this PowerPoint, some of it is familiar from the fall because we're just updating. So we wanted to keep some things out there to you and our residents as to the reason why we're doing this program. And we have some new items into this program to let people know where we're going with it. Again, why are we doing this? Number one is we'd like to protect our staff from injuries with heavy lifting of containers. Currently, we have a, I believe, between 40, 50-pound limit on our regular containers. Still, at that point in time, that is a lot of strain on our staff of lifting, especially when you're looking at each truck lifting at least six, 600 households per truck lifting each day. That is a lot of weight for staff to be lifting. We also want to keep our staff out of the line of traffic in the future with automated trucks. Again, as I've stated in the past, this industry is one of the top 10 hazardous industries in the United States. Accidents occur all the time, and many times it's because a driver is not seen by another or a garbage worker is not seen by a driver coming by on the streets. We'd like to reduce workmen's comp insurance costs due to injuries. We have been a very fortunate department in this industry not to have a large workman's comp cost. Probably over the last couple of years, we've had several injuries, but still very low compared to most municipalities and those in the private sector. Beautification of the community. Obviously, we have a lot of beautification programs going on, and a uniformed view of cans down the street is a lot much nicer looking than an arrangement of bags and other cans. And this program is also a goal of the City of Muscatine's comprehensive plan that finished up this last year. The containers that were, are offered are in two sizes for residents to choose from. Standard is a 65-gallon container, and we also offer a smaller container of a 35-gallon. That must be requested for this. This is a picture of the green containers that are City of Muscatine containers. As you can see, there is a serial code on these containers. Each one of these is recorded when distributed to a household. That number belongs to that resident's household, and we are expecting the container to be left there if the home is sold or if it's a rental, should be left for the next owner or renter to utilize. We do, we do have the ability to track this down with our spreadsheet that we've put together. And we have all of our routes set up for this for the future. And each year that we purchase containers, they will have, the first two digits, will be the year that that was purchased. So where we're at with this, in the fall of 2013 and spring of 2014, tippers were purchased for two refuse collection trucks, total of four tippers. And there's a lever on the side of the truck that operates the tippers. And I have a little video clip that I'll show you how that works here in this presentation. 980 containers were purchased and distributed to residential areas in our pilot program. This is the map of our locations. We put the map, they're in pink. As you will see, it's a kind of a variety of locations where it went to. Some of them are areas that are, what do I want to say, more of a cul-de-sac kind of area. Some areas have very tight areas to deal with with on-street parking. So it's been a good practice or pilot program for these different areas. This route that is highlighted in pink, these are the residential areas we deal with internally on our commercial route, which also picks up commercial waste.
I'm sorry, do that again.
We have a commercial route that we pick up commercial waste, which we also have residential, a small amount of residential on that route.
Thank you.
So how is the program working? Well, first of all, people said, "What is this green container?" It came to my house. Some people were like, "I don't want the green container." Some people were like, "I like the green container. When will I get a green container?" The green container, which has our emblem on the side of there, City of Muscatine, and I think it looks very sharp next to the blue recycling container, by the way, for viewing when, when residents do put it out. And some of the, some of the issues that have come up have been understanding where we're going with this because of numerous, only a certain amount of residents receive the containers. And as we have explained to residents, we're phasing this in. An information sheet was handed out with each container that allows for them to know how to place the container out at the curb and also information on when to place the container out, going back to our ordinances. So a lot of people were very curious, how do the containers work? And yes, we're using technology in this PowerPoint of videos. So let me go back. And we'll run it one more time for you to see. As you can see, the cart is wheeled over to, to the truck. It is then placed in front of the truck, and a lever is used to lift the container. There is no physical lifting of the container. Part of our program that we have done, we've done a new sticker. We have several stickers that are utilized in our solid waste collection program. And I did place these out at your seats so you can see them up close also. They're a bright yellow sticker. This is the residents that have our new containers. This allows for, if we have an issue, that we need to let them know there's a problem, such as all waste must be in the issued City Muscatine container. Waste must be placed within three-foot space around the container. And the reason we say that is, just like the recycling container, we want to have a consistency in placement for when we're into an automated truck because there needs to be enough space for when the automated arm picks up the container. So it's important that we begin this process for people to understand that we need to do that. This avoids a lot of damage to property, mailboxes. Also, it, it is just a good practice to begin people to think about. We also then did put in a reminder about collection times, when to put waste out and when it has to be out by, and also how they can contact us. Some issues that have come up, what do I do with all my trash that doesn't fit into the container? And this has been a really great educational process for our staff. It's an opportunity for Ariana, or who answers the phone in our office majority of the time, myself, Dan Ganser, our solid waste supervisor, Fernando Cardoza, our lead worker, and our other staff to ask questions such as, "Are you utilizing the recycling program?" 95% of our residents do, and we have a very high usage, and that's something we should be very proud of. What we're finding is residents may have some overflow of recycling, and it's not getting able to be put in their container, so they're throwing it away. We have offered that if you need more recycling room, we will give another container for the recycling program. And that is not a problem, or we can get a larger container for recycling because we really want to push the recycling program. And we've had many households that have gotten a second container, and that's worked wonderful for them. However, we do have some residents that may not be able to do that. And we are trying to make this program allow people to, or how should I say this? People should think about how they're throwing away their waste because a 65-gallon container, which everyone is familiar about, is a very large container that fits quite a bit of waste into that container. It can hold up to, it can weigh up to 300 pounds full, that container that we purchased. And if in the event someone really feels they need another container, we are recommending, it's a recommendation council, that a second container can be rented for $75 a year. That averages out to $625 per month, and it could be billed separately from MPW billing at a one-time full amount for the year.
Does that rate also apply to the second recycling container?
No. The recycling program and allied waste has been very supportive of this with us, is the more recycling that comes in, more benefits for allied waste, and the more beneficial it is for our whole solid waste program. So the encouragement to recycle is there if it is needed to, to containers.
Laura, remind me what the fee is per household per month to pick up one?
Regular residential garbage is $20 a month. We do offer a senior rate that you need to sign up for if you're interested in that, at $15 a month. And that covers currently garbage pickup once a week. It also covers your recycling fee. The compost site is covered underneath that. We also have several other programs that are covered under the garbage collection fee and also spring cleanup week.
Senior, excuse me, senior, do you find a senior person?
I believe it is at 65.
Okay.
Is the age. And you can sign up for that in the finance office. We do have forms at our office also.
That's exactly what I was going to ask.
Yes. So, and we do get asked that question once in a while, and we do offer that for the senior citizen rate. Does anybody have any other questions? I see there's just a lot of things turning. I can see questions.
There's two sizes of containers. Doesn't matter which one you get.
No, it doesn't matter. Based upon, the reason we did the 65 is that is a standard-size garbage container in, in the automated collection. We did not do a 95-gallon container because we really want people to think about what they're throwing away and encourage the recycling program. The 35-gallon is offered, and that is more for a single household or a senior citizen who perhaps only has one bag of trash a week and doesn't want to push out a larger container. We offer the 35-gallon for recycling also. What we're finding is residents who wanted the 35-gallon recycling container also want the 35-gallon garbage container. So our next steps in this process is in 2014 through 2015 fiscal year, purchase one automated refuse collection truck, that is with the automated arm, similar to what we have for recycling. We will be purchasing two tippers for one of our current refuse collection trucks. When we purchase the automated truck, one of our older trucks will be traded in, in value with that purchase, and purchase 3,000 more containers.
I didn't, I'm sorry, Laura.
Yes.
I keep interrupting you. But the first item was with an automated arm?
Yes.
I'm not sure what you mean by that.
The truck that picks up the recycling, that's the automated.
Okay.
That's got the arm that comes out off the side.
And we would need that too?
Eventually, we want to move all of our garbage collection to automated. And that's why we're...
Our current program has two operators, a driver and an operator. Moving to the automated truck will allow for just one driver with an automated arm.
In the 2014, proposed expansion of 2,500 households, 300 households in Ripley's, and approximately 200 containers to be used for commercial businesses that have just a few bags of waste each week. And as you will see, the green outlined areas, those are the proposed areas. I will be updating our website area, the City of Muscatine's website for this program, and we can put this information out there for people who want to look at the map in more detail. We can put that out there, and we'll get that out in the near future. The 2015 through '16, we'll be purchasing 2,700 containers. Approximately these numbers are, based upon our household counts. In 2016 and '17, we'll be purchasing an automated refuse truck. This would be the second one. We'll be purchasing, and then the next older truck would be traded in, and a purchase of 2,600 containers.
Then we're fully deployed by then?
Yes, we will be. Yes. And here are the areas in the 2015, 2016 households. Again, you can kind of see where they're at, and so I think it's important if residents do want to look at. A lot of times, it's just a question of, "When will I get my bin?" Our staff spent some time at the Muscatine Journal's home show, and that was a heated question along with looking at the bins. So it was, "When will I get my bin?" The 2016 through 2017 expansion, those are the other areas left. And that also, I believe, also includes a Fruitland area in that one. We have a contract that we service the City of Fruitland with solid waste collection and recycling services. This is what we're proposing over the next three years to get us to be an automated collection for solid waste in the City of Muscatine. I am open to some questions at this time.
Laura, I'd like to make just a quick comment. Going from Hershey Avenue, where we had just recycling, to Longhurst Court, where there is a, that second container, I really got to applaud you. It's so nice to have that second container, and you, you do everything for us. I mean, the only thing that we got to decide is, does it go in the green container or the light blue container? That's it. It's seemingly that the people in the neighborhood are using the system, love it. Just thanks, completely thanks.
I'm glad to hear that you have that opportunity. I know Phil Fitzgerald is another one who has a container in his area. He's one of our pilot ones too. So the neighbors, you've had good conversations.
Yes.
With that. Wonderful. We're glad to hear that. And we're, we're also glad to hear when people have questions or concerns or want to know more about this.
Laura?
Yes.
How about cutting down from two people to one people, person on the trucks? How will you take care of that?
Well, it is not our intention to cut jobs. That has not been our intention in this process. One of, we lost a full-time person over a year ago. We have never replaced that full-time person. We have utilized temporary part-time, which we have someone who is with us 29 hours a week, four days a week, to fulfill that full-time position as an extra body to help get, you know, throw trash on the back of the truck and work with our staff. And then we fill the Friday hours with another person. So we've never fulfilled one of the full-time positions. Also, the goal is through attrition or retirement as we phase this in.
So you, you kind of got a plan in place already?
We have a plan, yes. We're trying to have a plan and work the plan with that.
You have three trucks, Laura?
Currently? We have five.
Five.
We have a fleet of five.
So there's potential savings of five FTEs?
Well, no. Here's what we need to do. We will be getting two automated trucks. At the end of, by the end of the third year, we have the program in place. We would have three rear-load trucks still here. We need one to do our dumpsters. And you also need to have backup trucks. Because we have tippers already in place on those trucks, they could serve as a backup if we have a maintenance issue or we also have spring cleanup we need to do. Instead of purchasing another third automated truck, we would utilize our rear loaders.
We have five trucks.
Yes.
Don't you have plans to eventually have five efficient trucks and reduce five FTEs?
Oh, I'm so sorry. I was like, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute. I think I misunderstood your question. What we would be doing, we still will have, we, we would have two automated trucks and three rear packers, is what we are doing because we would take our routes and reroute them differently.
When the whole town has the new containers, it doesn't behoove us to have five trucks that can be operated with one person each?
We would not need five trucks that are one person.
How many would we need?
Right now, we're going to have our commercial route. That commercial route has to be utilized with a rear packer for dumpsters. It has tippers on it. So if there are the small businesses that have the containers, we would utilize the tippers on the back of the rear truck. The automated trucks would go out and handle the main residential routes. We would then take those routes, instead of having three routes, they would be divided into two.
So we're still back to, we're saving two FTEs in this entire program when it's rolled out?
Yes.
At an investment of how much?
The program, the trucks, if we were to do this all at one time, it would be close to a million dollars. It would be close to a million dollars.
Containers and trucks?
Yes.
And we're saving two FTEs?
Eventually, down the road, that's where we'd be looking at.
You got it.
Pardon?
You got it, that's it.
Are you saying then that this, this program allows them to pick it up faster? Get that quicker?
It is, on average, about a 17-second per household with an automated arm.
Okay.
And we have staff that work very efficiently, that are out and do their jobs well. So I don't want anyone to think that they're not efficient because they are very efficient. But our issue is that we have, this will allow for them not to have to get out of the truck. You won't have to maneuver containers around. If they do have to remove, maneuver containers, it's because they will have to, you know, there might be a car-block situation. But those are things we'll work around. But also, it is a huge safety issue. This is the wave of the future of, of collection. This is just what's going to be happening more and more in residential.
Laura, we're probably not going to get all the things figured out here tonight. But so there's, there's five trucks, but how many routes, how many routes?
How many routes? Well, currently, we have three main routes and an extra route.
And the one is the commercial?
And commercial. What we'll do, it's not going to affect anybody's garbage pickup. I really want to make sure people understand that. It will not affect the day we come and pick up your trash. Those routes are our internal issues that we will...
I was just trying to follow up on Mikes. He was trying to get a handle on the financial side of this thing.
Okay.
A million bucks to save two FTEs?
Well, we're not spending a million dollars.
Eventually, we will spend, she said a million dollars.
If you did it all at once, she said it would be a million dollars.
We're not, we're not here to set out to cut staffing by any means. We just did not replace the staff, the one that left. And we're not going to replace if someone were to go somewhere else.
But when you have bought all the equipment and spend a million dollars, whether it's tomorrow or over three or four years, you'll save two FTEs.
Your numbers are a little skewed. We're not, we're not, we're not purchasing, I guess there's the difference in cost between the trucks we currently buy versus the automated trucks.
Yes.
Which is about $100,000 difference?
Close to $100,000.
So we still have to replace those trucks that we currently have. So it's a $100,000 addition. So we'll have two, we'll be going to two automated trucks, $100,000 additional each. So now we're up to $200,000. We'll be saving about $70,000, $65,000 annually per employee through attrition. We should, we should save for two, for two employees. Plus any workman's comp?
Potential savings.
That's potential savings. We have a pretty good record right now with workman's comp, but it is an issue.
Where's the other $800,000? In the containers?
Yeah, I mean, you're, well, each one of those trucks is around $240,000 trucks.
Yeah, you mentioned a million dollars.
Yes. And then, okay, so $240,000 times two. So you're close to $5,000.
$500,000.
$500,000.
It's $480,000 for the two trucks.
And then you have containers.
$480,000 for two trucks?
A regular rear packer is about $150,000. Then the containers, you're going to be looking at any close to $400,000 by the time you're done purchasing all the containers. And we're right around 9,000 households. We, well, actually, we're over 9,000 that we service.
So it's a million bucks for two FTEs?
Well, the numbers I just heard are $880,000.
Okay, $880,000 for two FTEs? Is that correct?
Yes. Yes. But the driving force was not employee reduction.
No.
However, yeah, what you need to understand is that the automated trucks are only useful for residential pickup. They're not useful for commercial. So you always have to have a couple of the other trucks. And the other justification for doing the plan when we talked about this was by having the uniformed containers with lids, you have less trash blowing down the streets. You know, it's a cleaner, a cleaner process, which is also what we were after. So it's, not, the entire decision was not, was not financial. It's part of it, but not all of it.
If we're done, maybe talking about the economic side of it. I've had several comments from the people that are on this route that they like it. I had one call that I, about concern, and I haven't been able to reach that person yet to verify it. But I think his issue is a volume issue. But the people that I've talked to that are on the route, the experimental route, are very, very happy with it.
Thank you. I, we do appreciate hearing that. And again, we, we do appreciate hearing anyone who has a concern so we can address it in this pilot program.
I'm sorry, Laura.
Yes.
Well, the, the two new... Well, the two new trucks with the arms, will they be, could they take care of all the residential?
We will have, based upon depending on the size of the packer we purchase. I do not foresee us purchasing one the size of Allied Waste, because we have a location to dump our trucks when they're full. We're not going to a facility thirty miles away. What we would do is reroute internally, because there is going to be areas where the commercial route goes that may take care of some of the tipper areas with the commercial, but then the rest of it would be all handled by automated.
I'm not, but that wasn't a yes or no, was it?
Yes.
Well, yes. I mean, majority will be handled with the two trucks.
So, two trucks could handle the residential?
Yes.
If we didn't have commercials?
Commercial is, plays a part into our operations too.
That was, that...
Well, you would definitely have to have backup trucks.
But I think where you're headed is, should we be in the commercial business?
That's it. Yep. Bingo.
And when there are commercial, privately-owned commercial alternatives available, I guess the question is, why do we compete with them?
Yeah.
Well, when we bring the budget up, that is roughly a hundred and twenty to a hundred and fifty thousand dollars of our revenue is based on the commercial sector that we work with.
In monthly fees?
That is added overall in our budget. Our commercial has grown in the last few years. I think it's just been something that we offered, because we picked up near the downtown, and it started downtown, and it has grown.
So, the commercial fees are about a hundred and twenty thousand plus per year? Is that one fifty?
About. I mean, I don't have that number in front of me right now.
That's close enough. One twenty, one twenty to one fifty.
This, this sounds like a, maybe I'll just interrupt. This sounds like a good opportunity for a follow-up, in-depth session, where we can break out some of these costs, we put them on paper, and come back for a better discussion. So, what do we, that works for you?
That'd be helpful.
Okay, good.
Any other questions for Laura?
Well, actually, I have one, two last little slides, and I was requested to bring these up. Spring Cleanup Week, we just finished with. And these are the tonnage numbers for the past three years, just to share with you. I have waste, and I also have the tire tonnage. I do not have all the tonnage back from our Waste Commission of Scott County, who takes our electronic waste. But just so you can see, waste-wise, this last year, we did six hundred and nine tons of waste. And this does not include anything that was recycled before we got there to pick up. Two thousand thirteen was five hundred and eighty tons. Two thousand and twelve was five hundred and thirty tons. In two thousand thirteen, we added on Ripley's to our area, which we believe did add into, into our tonnage amount. And tires, which I'm always amazed where we get tires from. In two thousand fourteen, we did forty-nine point thirty-eight tons of tires. In thirteen, we did fifty-three point forty-eight. And in two thousand twelve, we had thirty-seven point fifty tires. So, those are the numbers. This is, this is where we are with that. It is a large undertaking. Our staff does a tremendous job with Spring Cleanup Week, and we're glad that we can provide that for our residents. And also, we also appreciate the roadway maintenance crew that helps make that happen too with us. So, it was, they do a well job. That is all I have this evening.
Counsel, any questions for Laura? Very good. Thank you. And next up on the agenda, Mr. Adam Thompson with the Historical Preservation.
I will let you go.
All right, just give me one moment here, and I'll change a few things. All right, well, thank you, Mr. Mayor and Counsel, for allowing me the opportunity. I'm not actually the one giving the presentation tonight. I'll actually introduce the person giving the presentation. But as you're aware of, May is National Historic Preservation Month. So, we thought, you know what, better than, you know, May to give an update to you guys on what has gone on here in Muscatine in regards to historic preservation. So, given the presentation tonight, it's gonna be Michael Mahary. You guys may, may know him. He's very involved in historic preservation projects here in Muscatine. He is the president of Friends of Muscatine Historic Preservation. I got it right? It's a long name there. So, I'll have him come up and, and talk to you guys about what's been going on here in Muscatine.
Hi, Counsel. Thank you for letting me take up some of your time. I appreciate the opportunity to help celebrate Historic Preservation Month, which nationally is in May every year. And thought I'd just give you an update about what we are doing as a community and as a, as a commission too. And so, without further ado, I will begin the presentation. So, our group is a nonprofit organization that was actually born from the Historic Preservation Commission last decade. The idea was to have a group that worked outside of the government entity, outside of the commission structure, to help work with the community members and promote historic preservation. And so, in two thousand seven, the Friends of Muscatine Historic Preservation was, was, had their inaugural meeting. We've done a few different projects over the years, including helping to find new homes for old houses as they move down the street, when, when their current location is not feasible anymore. We also had a statewide preservation conference a few years ago, where people from all over the state came to, among other things, enjoy our beautiful historic town. The other thing that we do is, every year, present Historic Preservation Awards, which I will get to later on. And so, we, again, as it says, celebrate projects that help preserve the historic character and heritage of Muscatine. So, the other thing that I come here to do is also thank the council and thank the city, because when the commission started its work on creating the West Hill Historic District, they probably didn't know what they were getting into. It was a lot of volunteer hours and a lot of hard work. But in two thousand eight, they, the Park Service, the National Park Service declared the first residential historic district in Muscatine as the West Hill Historic District. And so, there's a few pictures of some beautiful homes there in that historic district. And what that allows local residents to do is take advantage of historic tax credits. So, the state of Iowa has determined that if historic buildings are preserved in a, in a way that helps retain their historic character, that the state of Iowa will actually give a tax credit for some of the costs of that restoration. And so, as a result of that, as a result of your work to do that, since two thousand and eight, over one point six million dollars has been invested in the West Hill Historic District, just in the last six years. And because of, because of the work that the commission and you all have done to approve that, over four hundred thousand dollars has come back to residents in the historic district to help restore those beautiful historic homes. And so, that gets to another benefit of historic preservation in general. A typical rehabilitation project is sixty to seventy percent labor. So, that's different from building a new house from scratch, where there is actually material cost of bricks and mortar and wood. A lot of that is labor, and labor is usually hired locally, and that's where the money is also spent, because the local laborers spend their money in, in town, thus stimulating the economy, to the tune of one point six million dollars over the last six years. So, that has been a fantastic benefit for Muscatine. The other benefit is pretty, pretty old houses. So, we take homes that were otherwise neglected in the neighborhood and have a chance to restore them to their former glory. This one is on Third and Spruce in the West Hill. So, we will move on to some preservation award winners for this year. This is a picture of a house on Fifth Street, which is a previous Historic Preservation Award winner, but a beautiful slide. So, what I'd like to start out with is an award for stewardship. This is a house at five eighteen West Third Street on, in the West Hill, and it is owned by Community Bank and Trust. What they did was very responsible, which was an easy thing. It is fixing a leaky roof. The roof leaked. And if anyone has ever been in that beautiful house, it has two beautiful marble fireplaces and wood floors and plastered walls. And new house or old house, if there is a leaky roof, that could potentially do a lot of damage. And so, they took it upon themselves to repair the roof, and we very much appreciated that and enjoyed and awarded their stewardship for that, for that home. The next one is down the street a ways, but this is an award for preservation of a historic outbuilding. Behind our historic homes are historic carriage houses, or barns, or haymows, or other structures, and unfortunately, they're, they're becoming rarer and rarer. But they are insights into our past and history and heritage. And Marilyn, Marianne and Marlin Sheepers restored this home. You can see some of the wood was replaced that was, had lived its useful life, and they otherwise kept the features intact. And so, people can walk up and down our beautiful alleys and still see an example of, of what a structure used to look like and, and what it did behind the original house. And then we move on to excellence in paint. So, maybe a lot of you know this beautiful home at eight eleven Iowa Avenue. Mary Brewster, over the past year, has added historic paint scheme to, to her home, and it really sort of helps identify the details with the, with the pattern. And, and the other thing paint does is help protect wood, so wood isn't damaged over time. And so, we gave her an award for paint. The last award is for citizenship. Excellence in citizenship and historic preservation. The Muscatine Journal, as anyone who subscribes to it, on Saturday, page three, I at least always look forward to page three, where they have a beautiful old historic photograph of, of a neighborhood, or a home, or, or a location. And, and we thought that that was worthy of an award, just for, for keeping alive the heritage and showing people that this great city does have a, a rich heritage and, and sort of keeps that in everybody's, in the front of everybody's mind. So, we thought that was worthy of an award this year. So, the last one was a residence. So, Blake Sorensen painstakingly restored this home on Eighth Street, three oh two East Eighth Street, and that's near Cedar and Eighth. And it's just, it stands out as a beautiful home near the corner there, and we thought that was worthy of an award also. So, just a few more things. I took this photo right before I got here. I'm just kidding. It, it is an old postcard of City Hall here. Just to remind you all that if any maintenance or restoration or renovation of this building needs to happen, this building is eligible for historic tax credits, to the tune of twenty-five percent of the costs. And so, we have worked with the county of Muscatine County to help get historic tax credits for restoration of the courthouse, and they are to receive over six hundred thousand dollars in tax credit money back for them for simply restoring the courthouse. And so, things that meet the preservation recommendations for this building also are eligible for those tax credits. A few other projects our group has, we have applied for, to the community foundation for a porch preservation grant. So, we want to repair historic porches on historic homes and sort of have educational workshops, because the porch is sort of the front of the home. And so, for people that maybe need some tips and techniques on how to update and restore their porch, we want to be able to have them do that. So, we have a grant upcoming to help them do that. The other thing that you will see probably soon in the Muscatine Journal is that we want to try to help sell some of the homes that are currently for sale in the West Hill Historic District. There are currently eight, and our group has pledged to match incentives from both realtors and downtown local businesses, that they have volunteered incentives if somebody purchases the home. We will, we will match their donation, and so, there will be a package of incentives for anybody who chooses to purchase one of those homes specifically in the West Hill Historic District. And that is because you all have declared that area worthy of preservation. And so, we, we feel that it's in our mission to assist the beautification and the continuing preservation of that neighborhood. One last thing I'll leave you with is adaptive reuse. And so, there is a Masonic building a little ways from here that has the potential to, say, be exhibition space for the art center, if they are crunched for exhibition space. The top floor of the Masonic building seats four hundred people. That could be a convention center if needed. And so, it's already built, it just needs to be updated. So, if by chance, I hope it doesn't, if by chance things fall through, there is a building that could be a convention center as well. So, just food for thought for that. And with that, I will take your questions or answer any concerns you have or queries.
Mike, I remember one time you were taking, I think it was your friend's group, taking surveys along Mulberry. What's, what's the status of that?
Right. So, we had volunteers to survey all of the homes on Mulberry, going out from downtown, about twenty blocks really, to see if it was worthy of a historic district. In the meantime, since that happened, the architectural historian that we have worked with has determined that a more cohesive, sort of easier district to get passed would be the historic district around Weed Park. And that makes sense, because that was a pre-planned sort of area. And so, we had applied, sorry, the, the commission has applied for a grant to help survey the Weed Park area and declare that a national historic district as well. Mulberry is, is still on the table, but it was, it seemed like a little lower-hanging fruit, the ability to sort of have a, a bit easier pathway to have a historic district in the Weed Park neighborhood, which is a beautiful neighborhood.
So, it's, it's really next, and the Weed Park?
Right. That's right.
Mike, Dr. Mahary, kudos to Community Bank for doing what they've done. And I, an executive of that bank has told me their fervent desire that a historical preservationist purchased that house.
Indeed.
And if we, whoever that person might be, if they put a porch back on that, it will be a knockout.
Yeah.
It's been missing for about sixty years, I think.
And if anyone has an old photo that may have had the old porch too, we would be very interested in looking to see what that...
And kudos to the person who did the good deed at Third and Spruce also.
I'll let them know.
Yeah. That would be you.
Thank you.
And Scott asked me the other question I had, of what are the districts?
Just to be clear, the porch grant program is limited to homes in the West Hill District?
No, it's actually an educational series. So, we're gonna invite anybody, actually throughout the county of Muscatine County, because as you might imagine, Wilton and Columbus Junction have a lot of older homes also. So, anybody who wants to come to these series of lectures, it's literally gonna be hands-on at a home on Second Street in West Hill. So, so the actual project is on West Hill, but we wanna have, we wanna have MCC come to videotape it, and so, so we could have a sort of a permanent record on, here are the different parts of a porch, and here's how you make it all sturdy, and I'm, I'm not the builder, but, but, but different sessions that way, that we could put in each of the libraries, so that people could always refer to them if they need to.
Are there funds available for that program, for porch restoration?
There aren't, there are not grant funds per se, but again, if, if people choose to do that, they are, and in the West Hill, they are eligible for the, for the tax credits, for twenty-five percent of the costs.
I just had a call last night on Smalley Avenue. Can we just, you know, extend it?
With a little bit, a little bit, a lot of paperwork, that would be possible.
Tax credits and tax abatement as well.
And tax abatement as well.
I did mention Tiff to him.
We have a tax abatement program for...
We have a tax abatement program for, for homes in, in the Historical Districts.
Is the downtown or Historical District?
Yes, it is.
This district is covered by the tax abatement program.
Okay. I couldn't remember where.
There are two separate districts. One, the other one is the Downtown Historic District. And it's sort of overlapped by the Cultural and Entertainment Districts that we have in Muscatine as well.
Last opportunity, council.
Thank you.
Very good.
Very much, everyone.
Thank you for what you and your group are doing.
Next on tonight's agenda, review of the capital improvement program and debt issuance. Nancy Reagan.
Sure. Nancy's making her way up. This is a quick response, in response to our brief discussion at the close of our last meeting from Councilmember Larry Wall regarding bonding after, and taking advantage of the great rates that we got last week. I'm going to let Nancy kick it off.
Yeah. And this is basically kind of a review of the tradition the city has of bonding every other year, and options if, if council wanted to consider doing it more frequently. With the, in recent bond issues, we've worked with public financial management, our financial consultant, and we've tried to maintain the same debt service tax levy rate each year. And so, for the issue we just had, the $2,575,000, and we've all already scheduled an amount in 2016, we're able to work those in and not increase the debt service tax levy rate. So, that's what we've been working with the last several years, and that's helped us to maintain the overall city tax rate at the same level without increasing the property tax rate. Based on the question last week, though, if council did want to do more projects, increase the debt service levy rate to do that, I just roughed out, and that's actually on the second page, but item number one is a summary. If we had even debt payments for 10 years, so the total of the principal and interest was even each year, it would be about seven cents per thousand of taxable valuation on the tax rate. So, for each $500,000, that would be the increase. And that's just for kind of planning purposes. We would, you know, try to structure that in, but it would still have an impact if we change from the previous every other year debt issuance and do it more frequently. Part of the reason, and this is item number two, that we do the other, every other year issuance, there's issuance costs for each bond issue. We need to pay for the Moody's bond rating, we pay our financial advisor, we pay our bond attorney, and those are, there's a lot involved in issuing debt. So, we've been packaging projects and then actually issuing the debt for them every other year, and that has worked. And that also has allowed us to, to plan for the upcoming bond issue and structure our existing debt, based on not issuing again for, for two years.
That doesn't mean that the project can't start before that. And Colorado and Cedar are good examples of that, where those projects started before bonding, and in part because there's outside funding and other resources available for those projects.
Right. And if we, if we do intend to fund a project and we start it before we issue the, the debt, we need to do, and you've approved them several times, this resolution for financing projects and establishing compliance with reimbursement bond regulations under the Internal Revenue Code. There's a lot of legalities in issuing debt to make sure that it remains exempt from federal taxation and other requirements. So, before we, a, a project can be designed, the engineering can be done, but before we start construction, and if we intend to issue debt for that project later, that resolution, resolution needs to be done. So, council concurs that we're proceeding, we're going to fund it from a future year debt issue, and then reimburse the funds that are making that loan. So, this hasn't stopped us from proceeding with projects. And in a way, it, it has, especially on Cedar and Colorado, if we know the total project cost, if the project's actually been bid, or if we have a good engineering estimate, it's easier to bond the right, the correct amount of money for those projects. So, especially the, the larger ones like Cedar and Colorado. And I guess I kind of skipped down to number five. Most of the projects in, that we had in this land last bond issue, they had some, some part outside funding, federal grants. Both Cedar and Colorado had federal grants. The airport projects had 90% federal funding. The other smaller items, the, the ambulance equipment did not have outside funding, but that helped to balance the overall city budget. But the more projects in that CIP we can find partial grant funding for, it makes the local dollars go farther. And so, that's the plan going forward, to try to finance the projects in the CIP. The specific ones identify, the, the larger ones for the next, for the 2016 issue would be the local share of Mulberry, and there is a 80% federal grant for the construction costs of that project. The runway 624 reconstruction project, and that's going to be a significant dollar amount. The city share would be 10% of that. And then, another project that's been identified is Art Center HVAC improvements. There are, as we work with the bond attorney for each issue, there's requirements of things that are essential corporate purposes for bond issuance, and those basically are not limited. Council needs to approve, approve them, but there's not a specific limit for those. There's other things that are general corporate purpose, and those include things like new buildings, improvements to buildings, and the Art Center HVAC would be one of those general corporate purposes. So, in that project, staff will be looking for some outside funding, working with the bond attorney to see if that can be structured to remain legal, but there are some limits, the $700,000 limit on those general corporate purpose projects.
Without going to referendum?
Without going to referendum, and that referendum would require a 60% voter approval Part of the, with the favorable interest rates we received on the bonds last week, we may be able to consider issuing a little more than $2.5 million in that 2016 issue. It potentially could go up to $3 million if there's no principal repaid in the first two years, and we've been trying to avoid that, to kind of backload the debt, or we're trying to not do that. But we should be able to at least do the $2.5 million in 2016 without impacting the property tax rate. And I've attached, and I think you all received it by email, the actual Moody's bond rating report, and I've flagged a couple areas in there, just with asterisks on your copies. Part of the reason we maintain our bond issue, our, our bond rating, is because of sound financial management with improving reserve levels. And also, on the second page, they do ask our future bonding plans when they do the, the rating. And we told them, you know, that we were looking at the next issuance, debt issuance in 2016, at about up to $2.5 million. And I think they do appreciate the longer-term planning we're doing for our debt issuance.
And shorter-term repayment.
And our 10-year repayment.
Yes.
Right.
I mean, we, we came out, I think I mentioned it to several folks, or you saw it in the news, but Des Moines, Cedar Rapids, Dubuque, and Ames, all of them, rating this as well.
Did you mention Carlville? Could they go down any further?
I don't think about that.
So, so that's just kind of a background in, kind of traditionally how the city of Muscatine has funded their projects that need general obligation bonds. And at this point, I think we're, we're recommending that we keep with that pattern, the every other year debt issuance, and then planning for funding some of those projects in the next CIP.
It doesn't mean that there, there aren't projects that we can do, and that could be the Art Center, it could be City Hall, you know, but we want to continue to look for outside resources. Doesn't mean those projects can't start ahead of time. There are other funds available. The Art Center has funds available. And then, council could decide in 2016 to bond the $2.5 million, or we could bond in some, some amount in addition to that. It really seems that the appropriate time to, to do another bond, or to bond additional funds would be in 2016, at our normally scheduled timeframe to do that. Now, we could choose, as I said, to increase that amount at that time, but let's wait and see, let's, let's move some of these projects through the pipeline, see if we can identify some outside resources, and then bring them back through the budget process like we typically do, the capital improvement process like we typically do, and then tackle it at that time.
This is very clear and complete. Thank you, Nancy.
Sure.
As always. And much appreciated. I'm not, predictably, I'm interested in a museum, et cetera, but I had another thought. If you don't have the CIP with you, folks. But when talking with John Cook, who has started an exploratory study now, to see how much it would cost to take a lot more grease, et cetera, from, from vendors who will pay us to take it, I mean, large increase in volume, would then make, mean a very large increase in methane, which we are now just flaring off. I don't remember the numbers, but it's $500,000 plus or minus we spend on fuel for city vehicles. And we have a tremendous opportunity with the increased methane we're produce, plus GBC may, we don't know, produce methane, to use that to fuel our vehicles incrementally as we get vehicles. And we could save a heck of a lot of money. And that's, that's one of the things I had in mind about borrowing, but actual return on the investment.
Sure.
Go figure, huh? Those don't come along too often.
There's likely other resources for water pollution control plant projects, and in fact, that project, well, not, no, SRF funding through the state, state revolving funds. We may actually cash on hand, which is even better. And we are budgeting, we have the engineering budgeted for that project for this next fiscal year.
For the acceptance of the stuff?
Yes.
I, I believe the actual, yeah, the engineering is budgeted yet this fiscal year.
This fiscal year.
And I think the project is budgeted for next fiscal year.
Yeah. I don't know what it's going to cost, $800,000 to, it's on page, you don't have the pages anyway.
Basically, storage. It allows, it allows them to take that wasted at, at any time, and then incrementally put it into the system.
$780,000, a tank.
Oh, big tank.
Big tank.
And collection and, and, but then to, to put it in at the appropriate time, so you don't kill all the bugs off.
I wonder what.
Meter in. No.
Can't have too much garbage. Okay. Great. That's all I got.
I'm finished. If you have any questions.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Now, time for comments. Mike?
I've commented plenty. Thank you.
Pat?
In, in tonight's Muscatine Journal, it has a declaration that this coming Saturday is going to be Child Safety Day. I don't know if anybody has read the article yet, but it's the EMS and the, it's EMS, Child Safety Day will be held between 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM on Saturday, May 10th, in the parking lot of Blaine's Farm and Fleet. It's a free event. Emergency vehicles from area public safety agencies and apparatuses will be on display. The Med Force helicopter will also arrive sometime between 11:00 and, and noon. It'd be neat to have the kids learn about Child Safety Day. Thank you, Your Honor.
Ken?
I have nothing, except you guys all got to remember your mother's Sunday.
Very good. Tom?
Nothing to say, Your Honor.
Greg?
Just a quick comment. I'd like to say thank you to the Iowa Initiative for Sustainable Communities. They had, students had great presentations this afternoon and tonight. They celebrated the conclusion of their projects with the city. They did great, they did a great job, excellent projects, actionable projects. So, I'm looking forward to working with CIAT, city staff, and bringing those projects through fruition and to the council.
Very good. I have no comments. Is there a motion to adjourn? So.